Pastor Jeremy Olmer to come forward and lead us in prayer.
Would you pray with me? Father, we thank you for this day that you've granted to us. God, it is only by your grace that we breathe. And Father, today, we thank you for the state that we live in. God, this great city of Biloxi. God, I pray that your hand of protection will continue to be on our citizenry. And Lord, we just declare as this council meeting begins, God, your word says in Isaiah, chapter nine, God, that all government rests on your shoulders. And again, in John 16 says that, God, you would, your spirit would guide us into all truth. And James one says, Father, today, that anytime we lack wisdom, you give it freely without reproach. And so, Father, for the members of this council, God, would you grant them wisdom today? Would you guide us by your Holy Spirit? As decisions are made concerning this citizenry, God, would you just, God, would you impart wisdom beyond their own, God, supernatural divine wisdom, God, that would help us to lead our city, to protect our citizenry, and ultimately give you glory? In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? All right, we have a first by Mr. Gines, second by Mr. Glavin, all in favor. Seven zero.
To our consent agenda, we're adding item five L resolution authorizing and approving agreement with ON Sol LLC. We're substituting item five H resolution in connection with equipment lease purchase with the first, a national banking association. And we're substituting our routine agenda, the docket only.
All right, we have a first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Gines, all in favor. Seven zero. We'll now move to our presentation agenda, the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. We want to welcome everyone here and there to our March meeting. And I'm happy to report the governor has loosened up some of the restrictions and some of the suggestions that he has had. And we're having enough time, we hadn't had enough time to really talk about how it's going to impact us. But there, you know, he's kind of removing the heavy hand on a lot of things. But we're still going to ask to everyone to wear the mask and do the things that keep everyone safe. So I guess as we reach this herd immunity, what we're hoping for there with the, you know, the new one shots and the two shots that are ongoing, we're hopeful that we'll be back to normal sooner than later. So we'll be adjusting and figuring out what we need to do to accommodate the new directives by the governor. And, you know, we, again, we're hopeful that these numbers, especially the hospitalizations, are way down, seventy percent down than, I guess, a month ago. So things are, you know, without predicting, things are going in the right direction. We want to keep them there. Also, on my agenda, there was, from my mayor's report, an insurance presentation. But I think Kenny, if you jump in and kind of tell you, the last conversation, Frank is not able to be here, and he wanted to connect with each one of the insurance committee. But I think you need to talk with Kenny.
Yeah, we had a meeting this morning up here at City Hall. And basically, it did go up. Almost twelve percent, I believe, was the increase. We did add some additional buildings, but that was nominal. It was like one, less than two percent was the increase from the additional insured property. It was actually lower than what Frank thought it was going to be. And some of the other cities have seen twenty percent plus increases in their commercial insurance. And so, that's what we're looking at. I think it was around a two hundred and something thousand dollar.
Twenty-four thousand dollar increase.
Yep, yep.
We, in the budget this year, we bumped the number up two hundred, so we're not too far off.
Right. So we're almost at those projections a little bit, a little bit over. But all in all, it could have been a lot worse, and it came in about where we thought it would be.
And I think it's in line with my personal experience of the, almost approaching twenty percent. And what, you know, what are you going to do? So we're going to do the best we can do with regard to how we proceed and be creative. So I appreciate that update.
Let me say, for the record, that was property insurance only. That's the only insurance we have that clicks over mid-year. The other insurances, which were workers' compensation and general liability, have already clicked over for the year pretty flat.
Okay. Well, my last thing is to spread the expenses of Biloxi travel credit card to the minutes. And that concludes my report.
Thanks, Mayor.
And mine, too.
All right, we don't have any departmental reports, so we'll move to our council reports. We'll start with Mr. Tisdale.
Yeah, I don't know if there's an answer to this. I'm sure, well, I'm sure there's an answer to this question. I just don't know what it is, and perhaps somebody could enlighten me. These little, I guess they're sales newspapers, usually in an orange plastic wrapper that are tossed into driveways and front yards, I guess, once a week. In my neighborhood, I want to say it's Thursday. It may be a different day in different neighborhoods. Whoever's doing this, other than the newspaper, you know, gnomes or whoever makes this happen, do they have to have permission from the city to do this? The reason I ask that question.
Or do they, or do they need permission?
Well, the reason I ask is that particularly in front of many rental and some residential properties or homeowners, just let these things stack up. They end up in the gutter, they end up piling up and deteriorating. In my neighborhood, to some extent, and I'm sure in other neighborhoods, but I don't know. What, is there an answer to that question, or how can, can we restrict that?
What was the question?
How can we stop the newspaper gnomes from throwing these circulars weekly in our neighborhoods?
I guess we better figure out who they are first.
Well, that would be y'all's job.
Apparently, they like your neighborhood, because I don't have any coming to my house. But we'll see if we can't track that down and figure out who they are.
Jerry, may I have a?
There's nothing specific in the ordinance right now that prohibits that. However, we did have a complaint about that a few years ago in Wool Market, where someone was being tossed a grocery store circular in their yard. We called the grocery store. They said, all the person has to do is call us, and we will not deliver it to their house again. But as far as something being in the ordinance now, there's nothing that prohibits that.
So might we want to look at that and just see what's possible with Mr. Abid, perhaps just?
We'll have to track one down and see where they came from.
Okay, just.
Start in your neighborhood.
Look for the end of a rainbow.
Okay. It's very much worth looking into.
And I just see these things stack up just everywhere. I'm sure it's not just in my neighborhood. Maybe it is in my neighborhood. I don't think it is. The other thing is, I have a Ward five meeting scheduled for Wednesday, March seventeenth, at six o'clock at the Snyder Center on Pass Road. Of course, the Ward meeting's open to the public. That concludes my report, Mr. President. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Newman?
No report.
Mr. Lawrence?
You have a report? No report this week, right?
Got it. It's on.
It's on.
It's on.
Green light.
It was on.
Hello? Did you hear anything?
Yes.
On the mandates, are we going to have them still at City Hall with the masks? We're going to examine exactly. I think we just got the text of what the governor had said, and we'll have some suggestions about face-to-face, nose-to-nose kind of interactions, and we'll see what we're going to do. But, you know, give us till morning, to the morning, to figure out what we want to do inside City Hall, especially where it's close quarters, across counters and that sort of thing. We hadn't made the call yet, though. We just got the news this afternoon on the relaxation of the mask. And I want to ask Mike, on health insurance, you know, we're talking about last week about it being up eight hundred thousand. Do you have the reports all the way up until February, so we can meet the committee and maybe discuss something that's going on now?
Councilman, you're referring to the report from Councilman Ward five of last meeting? We haven't seen our end of the month for February that I know of yet. We normally do a mid-year review. I give you, I give you the numbers every quarter. So the end of the, the end of the first quarter, that's October, November, January, and March. End of March, you're going to get a number. And I think at that point, like a lot of other things, we'll have to make some course corrections.
Yeah, I just want to know when you get that information, let us know, then we'll have a meeting, so we can meet and look at whatever you have, the latest or most update you have as far as the health.
The unknown to us is, I mean, the known is what our medical claims and costs have risen to this year. The unknown is, are we as a municipality going to get some feed, some flow down on COVID financing that may help us?
And another thing, has anybody heard anything about, we sent that package update about the Gov. Court to the legislators? Have you seen what it?
I don't.
Describe that at all?
I mean, I don't have the answer to that. But, you know, we're going to be in Jackson. Peter, you got an update?
Right now, the state has passed.
It's been handled through the state to have a universal, all cities can have them under very similar guidelines to our legislation. So right now, we're waiting for that just to pass. If that doesn't pass, or doesn't, if that gets hung up, our representatives have assured us they will, they have time to drop our bill. But it's looking like it's going to be statewide.
I think that's a good thing, because a lot of action down there with the, you see people riding up and down the street with the Gov. Courts already. That's a good thing. And the more stuff they open up downtown Biloxi, it's a good thing. Are you going to go further down Howard Avenue with the brick shit?
I'm not sure. Let's see, we're out, close out of the state guidelines, and we'll make that call.
Go with that Markst Avenue doing right there on Howard Avenue, that's going to be huge. That's going to be a big impact on the area right there. Then you got that Lama Brewery right behind it, it's a lot of people.
Yeah, we've, to accommodate that, you know, that kind of development, I think we actually connected the under I-ten parking lot to, specifically, I think, was for the brewery. And then, you know, of course, the martini bar and that configuration, we're trying to, that, and, you know, even looking at the expansion of the brick work from Randall Street to that I-110. That's on the radar. It's not, you know, we're not ready to give you, you know, the nuts and bolts.
Too big retail events right there. Then you have airports open up around the corner, so that's, that's just what we need to bring downtown back.
Right.
That's a good thing. They brought this up last week about the flashlights, we talked to Bill Ray, you know if they got the flashlights in to put by Nativity on Porter or?
No, no flashlights installed this week, yet.
Say again?
There were no lights installed this week, but I think.
No, I said, he, he said he had to order.
Yeah.
I don't know if he had got them into y'all, and that's why I'm checking with y'all.
All right, we'll check.
It's a great safety issue for kids going to school, you know?
This is on Porter Avenue, I know, ready to.
On the list of things to do.
Yeah.
After we pay for everything else.
Let's see. That's everything. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Demme?
First and foremost, just, Paul, I think we actually brought up those, those news, the little orange bags. A few years back, we talked about this once already on how we can prevent that from being a nuisance to property owners that don't want that. I don't know if we ever got anywhere with it, so thank you for bringing it back up, so we can hopefully get a resolution. If you want one, there's one in my driveway, feel free to come by and get it.
Okay.
Also, a quick question. I've had a couple people ask me about the, I guess there's some drag strip tire burnouts on the red brick in the View Marche?
Yeah.
Or the district?
We kind of tracked it to, Chief made a, not an arrest, but we kind of isolated it. I don't think there's been any more since.
But the question is, how do we clean those off? And can we? I mean, it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful roadway with that as in those, there's some thick ones that are just an eyesore. And so, a couple, a couple members of the community have asked me, when are we going to clean that off?
Well, that's, you know, we need to look into that a little bit further. We wait and see how far, you know, how it wears off, because this is burnt rubber into the brick. And worst-case scenario, you just take the bricks that weren't in burnout and replace them. But, you know, again, we've discouraged that kind of behavior in a late-night kind of situation as they leave certain entertainments. I mean, you know, we're going to have to face that, the more and more successful Howard Avenue will be. So, but we'll discourage it, but I don't, don't have the answer. I know we had an issue with, when we painted the parking, I guess, towards the Bark Building, end of the Bark Buildings, we really just replaced the brick where it was painted. I don't think it's, you know, without doing any kind of environmental, we can't just use some of the things that we want to use to get it off. But I'm with you. It's, it's not, you know, not cool.
It is, it is definitely.
My Naval Academy days, I learned that there was only three appropriate answers, yes, sir, no, sir, and I'll find out, sir. So I'll find out, sir.
Well, thank you. Something else, the causeway pier, the damages to the pier are where we at on repairs.
Pier?
The pier.
Okay, well, that's a good one. We have had discussions with FEMA about doing some projects other than the way they've been done in the past. And these are all projects that we have to apply separately for. In the last week, the mayor has met with two different A&E firms who've presented various options to build the pier differently. We've got some others coming in. We've gotten some really good ideas to put together this mitigation project. And our intent is to not be in a hurry. There are other things that we need to get done quicker, but is to get, is to pick a, pick an A&E firm with a good, and put together these good ideas. One of the things that came up, this was one of those moments, I guess, a senior moment you might say, with me, I don't know if you've noticed it, but the thinnest amount of sand on the entire beach, in terms of width of the beach, is right there at, next to that pier.
Lighthouse Pier.
The Lighthouse Pier. And it occurred to us that in mitigating the pier, by building it differently, we could also mitigate the loss of all the sand by doing some different things with regards to how we block the flow of the water under the pier. So anyway, we're, if you will, doing, doing some soul-searching about how to fix that up. And we intend to submit a hazard mitigation project. And a hazard mitigation project, as has been described to us, if it was a million dollars to replace the pier the same way, that we can go up to a hundred percent of that, or two, two million dollars.
To do it better.
To do it better. So that's, we have to do that, you know, a cost-benefit analysis and make those, make that case, but that's, that's our intent.
As long as, look, I know there's a lot of needs in the city, and we can't get everything done at the same time, but as long as we have a plan in place and we're moving forward with repairing that pier, that's what I know the constituents of my ward want to hear.
Arnold covered it really well, and we know, I've always said that we, we're not going to do it the same way. You know, the lateral drift that he's talking about is apparent at every outfall, where it builds up on one side and scowls out on the other. So we're trying to address two or three things as we rebuild. Not, that pier is different than another pier, than Coliseum Pier, and different than the, you know, things on the, on the bay. You can look, you will notice at the Coliseum Pier, especially if you look at aerial photography, they took a while back and, and put like bags of concrete, and it's stacked up to be a jetty or growing, that, that actually keeps that. So my approach especially with the, with the Lighthouse Pier is to do something different to sustain, you know, or to interrupt that lateral drift that's taking everything from east to west.
So in building up the sand, we're not only mitigating the pier, but we're also mitigating the sand beach and the lighthouse and the park and the parking lot. All of that would be protected better if the sand were to build up there, and it would build up there better if we built the pier differently. Anyway, so it's been an interesting week talking to these different firms.
The pilot program, project that we've got going is, is the knee wall that, on top the, the seawall from Oak Street to Small Craft Harbor. So everybody's looking at that, you know, that application of the walkway and the replenishment of the sand, so it can be modeled. I think there's been a number of inquiries about, not from us, but from, you know, some of the senator's office on what is it going to take? Give you an update, a seventy thousand linear feet of seawall. And in Biloxi, we have thirty-one thousand linear feet of seawall. Fourteen thousand have that ten-foot walkway on top the seawall. Our goal, again, there'll be about five thousand linear feet from Oak Street to the Small Craft Harbor. The next logical step is in the area, Michael, you know, talked about, there's some gaps from Porter Avenue to around the cemetery, you know, usually at the right of way. So to, if it's successful, you know, and doing what we needed to do, we want to cover that. At least, you know, our next step would be to get that seawall walkway from Porter Avenue all the way to White Avenue, and then there's bits and pieces. So the question, again, from, from our congressional delegation, how much, you know, where are the pieces we need to fill in? It's about, you know, a million a mile, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the added information. I think it kind of got away from my question. We'll move on to the next thing. The drainage in West Biloxi, we've talked about it numerous times, it's some of the oldest and probably the most threatening for problems that we have in the city. Have we began a plan to address the, the drainage issues, the age of the drains in West Biloxi? I know right now, we're, I think we've probably had more rain in the past few months in that area than we've had since I've been elected. And the need for drainage is, is more apparent now than it has been. So have we began to formulate a plan, at least a cost projection of what it will cost to repair the outdated lines that are in the ground?
Well, for starters, the biggest problem we have in West Biloxi is watered sewer, and not drainage, but I'm not saying drainage isn't an issue.
I think all three of those kind of go together. Most of them are in the ground next to each other and are aged similarly.
So, so we did a drainage master plan for Wool Market a couple of years ago that we're still beavering away at. We do not have a recent drainage or, if you will, master plan for, for West Biloxi, and it is something that we probably need to do. I mean, we're, without a plan, though, I mean, we kind of know where the problems are, at least. That was the million dollars we dumped into Tanglewood, for example, this year, which was just a drop in the bucket. There's still another, that was just water lines. We took care of about a third of Tanglewood. I mean, really, Tanglewood is a ten-million-dollar problem, just that neighborhood by itself. But specific answer to your question is, we do not have a West Biloxi drainage plan.
Okay, well, hopefully, we can talk more about addressing that concern shortly.
One of the things that people in Biloxi, when you've been in Biloxi for a while, that you realize, is that, now, I'm talking about flat peninsula Biloxi and not Wool Market with hills and valleys of Wool Market. But when it rains really hard, if you wait an hour, the water's gone. But for that hour, it's pretty dramatic, because we're so flat and there's just nowhere for the water to go. There's a lady in Huff Alley Street that calls us every time it rains, and we rush over there, and by the time we get there, the water's gone. I mean, it's pretty dramatic for her, goes up to her steps, then it's gone.
Well, I agree, and we see that over there in some of my neighborhoods. The thing is, you see the yards as, as the slope of the grass leads to their door, you know, now, you see the water line getting closer and closer to the houses, and so I think that's what they see, and it concerns them, and rightfully so. So, but let's talk more about how we can formulate a plan to address that in the near future. The bridge, with the new administration in Washington, they've pledged to set aside a lot of money for infrastructure. Have we touched base with any of our lobbyists or any of our congressional delegation about getting some money for this Pops Ferry Bridge?
We have touched base with some of the engineers who've touched base in Washington, and we have actually, you know, our lobbyist, Keith Hurd, who has, you know, those connections, that that's exactly, you know, the subject, you know, we're looking for hundreds of millions of dollars to do what we need to do. May not come out at once, but we've got to ask, and we're certainly positioned to chase those, those connections and see if, in fact, things are freed up in, you know, a little bit different, you know, we've kind of had some, some concerns with AMDOT and the Federal Highway Commission. So that's questions we've been talking about, especially with some of these engineers lately. But those channels we're exploring, for sure.
Okay, thank you. The last thing I have on my list is actually directed at Mr. Creel, if I could discuss something with him regarding trash disposal. I know we have, in my ward, we've sent numerous letters or pictures to your office, and you can only address them as they come in, and I get that. But as we have these repeat offenders that put mattresses out in the road and different things like that, is there a way to, to penalize these people for repeatedly putting household furniture and mattresses? And I've got some pictures that are very disturbing that occurred out in Carewood and areas in the ward today. But how do we handle, how do we handle these people that are there and continue to violate our, our policies, our ordinances?
Well, I mean, we have to, we have to follow the ordinance on code violations. If they put debris out there, whether it's mattresses or whatever, we write them up. Now, one thing we do with repeat offenders, whenever we have a first-time case, we'll start off with a notice of violation, first of all, with a courtesy letter, and then we'll go to a notice of violation, and then we go to the citation if nothing's been done. But once we have a repeat offender that continues to do something, we go straight to a citation, so that they're scheduled for the next court date. And if they get it removed, then the issue's resolved. If they don't, then they'll go to court and, and have to pay a fine.
Okay, trailer parks, and I don't mean RVs, I mean mobile home trailer parks, are they required to have dumpsters?
The way the language is written in the ordinance is that the Public Works Director is the one that would make that recommendation about whether or not a trailer park or any other type of business is required to put in a dumpster. Now, any new businesses, any new commercial businesses where the, we determine at DRC that the trash is going to be to a level that requires a dumpster, we go ahead and require them to put it in. But if the trash pickup at an existing trailer park or, or business has gotten to a point where it cannot be accommodated with trash cans, then that recommendation would come from the Public Works Director.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Creel. Anything else? That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Glavin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple things to follow up. Mr. Lunard, I just want to kind of get an update on, we're in place, there's still that fence around that pump that they're not, it doesn't look like anything's being done to erect that fence around the pump station.
A purchase order has been issued. It just, the contractor hasn't responded. That's a FEMA reimbursable at some point. But we had, we had, have an issue with that and several other fences that are around the lift stations.
Okay, that's great. Also, I want to report, just to conclude my report today, we met with an engineer, Robert Smith, not to be concerned, confused with the City of Biloxi's engineer, Robert Smith, totally different person. But we met with Director Creel, and we just discussed the opportunities to designate certain areas that are natural ditches. If we could do these conservation easements, it could get us some points back. Currently, I believe, we're at a level five, is that the right terminology? But we're only points at a level five. If we lose that designation and it slips to the next level, then insurance rates, flood insurance rates go up. And so, even though this opportunity doesn't appear to get us to a level four, it may accumulate some points to give us a buffer that won't let us slip down below the current rating that we, we enjoy right now. So I'll continue to work with the administration or be there as an advisor in any way I can to get these flood rates maintained, if not reduced. So it was pretty exciting news today on that. Really enjoyed that meeting. On the governor's action today, it's really exciting to see that, especially from a tourism standpoint. It's already, has to be getting out, because we do see the phones at area hotels are starting to ring off the hook. That might be a story, Keith, for you to follow up on, but the worry is getting out there that we've always been open for business to a certain degree, but it's certainly sending the right signal that we are open, and it comes at the right time, where our businesses are looking for that, that ray of hope, if you will, and this might be the ticket. Texas, I understand, removed everything. They said, we're, we're now open. They said, we're now open, everything's removed, let's get up and rolling. I know we have to be cautious. We don't want to have another spike and all of a sudden thought that we were out of the woods, so to speak. We're not out of the woods, we know that. But we certainly don't want to be reckless in the actions that we do. But you do see events that are starting to come. Our cheer sports, our dance groups are coming to the Coliseum. They're already, we're starting to do that last week. And you see on social media, there's other events that are trying to be organized to come to the beautiful Mississippi Gulf Coast as they should. So I'm excited. We should be excited. That is something that we've been looking for, and it looks like that might be right here within our grasp very shortly. I want to, again, applaud the administration with help from Public Works, with help from, in this case, Connie Rocco, and also Councilman Deming for pointing out a treacherous little, another washout area. It's being looked into. It appears there's a leak right there by Applebee's that is starting to deteriorate, you know, that piece of roadway. And it looks like we're going to be jumping on that pretty soon to make a correction there. And I just want to tell Mike and the mayor, thank you all for the response. I know you've got seven council members that ask for certain requests, service requests, and attention to certain things, and I know you've got everything else going on, but the, I mean, Operation Warp Speed that y'all work on is really recognized and to be commended. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Glavin. Mr. Guines?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to touch on the CAO. Mike Leonard mentioned Huff Alley, and Walt, just Walt's supposed to get us a date on correcting that issue on Huff Alley. The lady, she does call quite a bit.
Yeah, she's a very bright lady and very persistent. And there's no doubt that the water's not running away from her house like it should.
And it was a misstep on the contractor's issue, but we did put in a work on it to have it corrected. So we're just waiting on that time to come to get that corrected. Okay, the other thing I got is I wanted to ask Peter, what kind of timeframe we got left on the golf cart ordinance that went up to the State House?
The existing legislation states it would take effect July 1st of this year, so my recommendation is the draft ordinance that we've already approved as a council, that we can go ahead and put that, start the first and second readings, say, in June. In that way, we'll be ready to go July 1st.
Okay, so in other words, we can just start outlining the districts where they are acceptable, or the areas they are acceptable?
I think the way we had the ordinance drawn up would state that if it's under twenty-five miles, or twenty-five miles or under, that's an acceptable district. We talked about how to cross roads, you had to have a traffic light to cross, nothing south of Highway 90. And so that was our, I think, our draft ordinance we had.
Okay, thank you. And I have a couple of notes. On Saturday, the Islamic Center at Dorsey Bush Park will be doing a food drive, and I want to ask for forgiveness, and I don't see Chief Miller here, so Mike Leonard, if you don't mind.
The night off. I gave him the night off.
You gave him the night off, okay. I wanted to get a couple of cones from him for traffic, you know, just to make sure we're safe about doing it. It's going to be at Dorsey Bush Park, and just probably about five or six, probably about six cones, just to make sure that, you know, we're safe. Kind of, there's going to be a big truck there to give out fresh produce and things there at Dorsey Bush Park. That's the sixth of, sixth of March.
What is it? Dates?
The dates, the six. Let me look at it real quick. Is that the seventh?
Saturday, the sixth.
Saturday, the sixth.
Got it.
Ten o'clock, 10:00 AM. So it'll be about an hour from about 10:00 to 11:00, 11:30. And of course, I've asked some of the healthcare providers, there are a lot of people who are still not able to get to the COVID vaccination sites. So in the future, we want to try to set up some areas within the community for people who can't, who don't have an opportunity to make it out to those sites. So we want to make it as easy as possible for people who want to get a shot to come on and get a shot. So I put in a request, and I'll be...
You'd be happy to hear that Memorial gave us thirty vaccinations for our Public Works and first responders, code enforcement, and so forth. And those are going to be given at the Gruyitz Center this Friday morning, it's coming Friday morning. And they've said that as soon as they get another batch in and they're allowed to go down to the next level, they'd be happy to set up a shot fair for us at the Gruyitz Center.
Okay, and this is just for the city workers?
This is for city employees who are either first responders or they have special circumstances.
Yes, and my goal...
They gave us a total of thirty.
Thirty, okay. And my goal is to try to get a mass group, the community, people who are walking, who don't, who have bicycles, who don't have access to computers to make reservations. Right now, you have to make reservations in order to get at one of the testing sites. Then you have to have transportation to get there. So what I want to try to do is bring it to the community, and I put in a request to try to bring it to the community. And upon whatever date they give us, I would like you guys to help assist me in making it happen. Okay, thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Guines. Several things. First, I'd like to thank the mayor for riding with me on, or rode with him on Thursday, looking at some roads that were needing paving out of Wool Market. And then on the paper deal, if I remember correctly, on this, we had an issue with it in Wool Market. And I believe that the way that our ordinance is written, it allows that. And for that to not be allowed, we would have to change the way that our ordinance is written. There's something about pamphlets being distributed or something like that that gives them the right to throw it in every driveway or something along those lines. So we would have to do a text change on that if we wanted to get rid of that. As far as the governor relaxing the restrictions today, is our plan to do what we've done all along, to go, as far as businesses are concerned, to go along with what the governor's done and not do anything in addition to that as far... So if he releases the businesses to be open 100%, we're going to follow suit on that and not do anything in addition.
What we're exploring is our mandates to do nose-to-nose kind of business in utilities and some of the other places.
Yeah, as far as city buildings and stuff, I understand. But as far as actual businesses go, we're going to go with what the governor is. Okay, good. The trailer parks and the dumpsters that Robert mentioned in his report, I would like to see us maybe look at that. That's an issue in my ward especially. We have several of those larger parks, and when a tenant moves, they don't have dumpsters. It goes on the side of the road, and it's mattresses, and it's beat-up dressers and everything. I would like to, and if it's Billy, Ray, or whoever that has to do that, I would like to see us, you know, send some type of form letter out or something to the owners or managers and tell them that they'll be fined if, I mean, it's every week in front of Colville Grocery. And, you know, I think that we ought to require them to have dumpsters to keep that from happening. I understand there are times when people have to put stuff out by the road, but every week is, that's not, you know, that's not okay, in my opinion. So I think that we ought to, whoever's in charge of doing that, we need to send a letter telling them they have a certain amount of days to do that, then we're going to start writing fines for putting that out on the road every week. It's just, it's to the point of being ridiculous at some of these places. And then I saw somewhere, and I don't know that applies to us, but I saw on one of the , and I don't know what our match is with reimbursement for debris pickup, what are we paying? Is it eighty, twenty, ninety, seventy-five, twenty-five?
You're talking about the debris pickup that's just been concluded for...
Yeah, but we pay a portion.
Three hundred thousand QB guards. One of the things I could point out, was going to a little later in the day, is on your regular agenda tonight, you'll notice about 1.9 million dollars' worth of payments that we're making. The agreement is for all eligible debris that we picked up, and not everything's eligible, but of all eligible debris, that FEMA will pay 75% and that MEMA will pay another 12.5%.
The reason I'm asking that is because I saw somewhere where Louisiana got approved for a 90-10 through FEMA. They updated it, and they changed that to 90-10. So that might need to be something we look at because that could save us substantial money on the...
Twelve point five percent right now, but we'll separate that issue.
Not MEMA, I'm sorry, FEMA is paying 90% in Louisiana on their storms instead of 75. So if we could, I mean, that would save us substantial money on our portion if that was the case.
The mayor's got a meeting with the MEMA head this next week, Thursday, so I'm sure that's going to be on his list.
And then the last thing is, two things, and I know this isn't my ward, and I'm not trying to jump in anybody's business, but today I was driving down Howard Avenue whenever we had rain come through. And with that being just redone, the amount of water that was standing on that road in some places, it just, with the drainage and everything just being redone, it didn't seem right. I'm talking some places, it was six, eight inches of rain, and it wasn't like we had a torrential downpour. And I don't know if there's stuff that's still closed off, and...
Right, there's a lot of saying, in parallel to get to the outfalls, especially on Highway 90, and, you know, Bill Ray and AMDOT vacuums a lot of that stuff, but, you know, sometimes there, you know...
Yeah, I'm talking about the area that was just redone between Calvet and Porter. Is that right? Yeah, there was a lot of water standing on Howard. On Howard Avenue, yeah. And that was just redone is the reason I'm saying that. So that shouldn't, unless I'm mistaken, I don't think it should be holding that kind of water, just something to look into. And then the last thing is, piggybacking on what Kenny said about tourism, I read somewhere where Mississippi and the Gulf Coast was the number one tourism in the nation this year, past year. And I know that a lot of that has to do with other places being closed down, but I think it gives us, as Kenny was indicating, a, you know, an opportunity. And that's why I think it's real important that we, you know, take these mandates off of these businesses, and it could really help us, give us an opportunity to show the world that many people that may not come to Mississippi are originally coming now because we're open, and it could really boost our tourism long-term. And so that's why I asked that about the businesses, and I think that's everything.
Nathan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I have not seen the Gaming Commission's response to the governor's position on the mandates. Do we know what the Gaming Commission is?
I haven't had time to read through it all yet.
Did we talk a little bit about that today?
Yeah, let me, and let me clarify too, for, as we're just now reading the executive order, I mean, it revoked and rescinded Executive Order 1325, which was the last executive order that put limitations on the amount of people in restaurants. It put restrictions on when bars could close, and so all those restrictions are off and rescinded as of tomorrow. So all businesses are as normal. The only couple of restrictions he kept on were some things in schools and wearing masks in schools, but in arenas, he said the limitation is 50%, not necessarily meeting halls or meeting facilities as far as, and so there'll probably be some clarification on that, but all meeting facilities, and I think over the last year, people have gotten trained to know what to do to use their common sense. So I think all that is as normal. The only thing he's talking about is for events like indoor, maybe an indoor boxing match, that would be an arena, or a concert at the Coliseum. Right now, it's 50%. Talking with the casinos, the Gaming Commission has them under certain guidelines for serving people and things like that and requiring them to wear masks. Their convention business and things like that, they have just been following the governor's 50% rule for their restaurants and things like that. So it's, you know, the buffets and things like that, that'll be up to them as a business to decide whether or not to go back to normal on that, so...
One conversation we hit about, you know, in conventions and sit downs and so forth, you know, normally 12 top tables, they've been putting it at eight. So you're trying to get some clarification on convention business is going to be strong, we hope, and that's where these opportunities we have right now or before us.
And a smart business is going to set their facilities up in a way to make the customers comfortable, but that's just letting the businesses do what they feel is best. And I mean, that's still overriding in the governor's existing executive order is to have available places for sanitation and things like that. But there are no hard and fast, you will close at 11:00. That's gone now.
I'd like to just make one comment on this topic. Very, very important, there was a study done by the American Hotel Lodging Association just recently, and it looks for why are people making travel decisions? It used to be strongly because there was a brand, a Holiday Inn, a Hilton, or some kind of brand that they were comfortable with. The brand is now taking, the brands are actually taking a backseat, not that anybody doesn't want to come to a brand, but the thing that has risen to the top because of COVID is sanitation. And being able to see and look and feel that there are sanitation procedures in place, that may be something as a community, as a city, we want to maybe do some public service announcements that, hey, we're sanitized, we're clean, come visit us, come play here, and we're taking those extra steps that you're going to see it when you experience the Mississippi Gulf Coast. That would be a smart thing to do. And I just want to make one more comment on a gentleman that walked in. I didn't see him walk in, he's hiding behind Mr. Creel over here, Mr. Paul Boudreaux. I'm not going to give him any time under my council minutes because we'll be here all night, so he's got three minutes to talk on his subject. But he's been a very conscientious citizen recently, well, not just recently, but all the time. But recently, he's been recognizing the litter that's been strewn around everywhere, and he even took steps to get the person's name off of one of the receipts contacted Biloxi PD, and I'm sure he'll talk about this. And we actually found out who did it, and they came and cleaned it up, but that's just one person. There's a lot of people doing that, and we need to figure out a way, and I'm sure Mr. Boudreaux will elaborate on that public comments. Thank you.
Maybe if there's a way for us to, especially the bars, send something out, a blast, letting them know that they're no longer going to be restricted to that 11:00 cutoff on alcohol sales as well.
Well, I disagree. The Health Department removed the self-serving requirements, the restriction for self-serving on buffets, and many of our casino buffets were still restricting that. And I know my father is one of the directors over at the Island View, and they came in to do their inspection, and they said, hey, you know, we lifted this a long time ago. They didn't know, none of the buffets were allowing self-service, so I don't think it's a bad idea to send it out.
Just send it out, and then maybe even add on what Kenny said as far as the, you know, that that's something that people are looking at when they travel now. And I know that we can't mandate it, but it just encourage all of our businesses to make it a visible thing, but...
We've got a team that'll put that together, right?
All right, George?
I just want to ask Kenny, the Margaritaville, Kenny, are y'all planning to open that in March now or what?
Yeah, we're March 10th, full speed ahead, doing the final touches and checks and all that kind of stuff, and I can't wait to get that property open. It's clean as a whistle right now, and it's going to be really exciting to get that property open.
How about the White House and Legends?
We're wide open, wide open to those properties too. And like I said, we, you know, I get to visit the properties, you know, during the week, and I'm telling you today, you know, as the... you know, as the, the, the governor was making the announcement, it, it made those phones start ringing. I mean, they're, they've been ringing, but they are really ringing now. So it, it's been recognized. People's got cabin fever. They can't wait to get to the Mississippi Gulf Coast to, to restart their lives again.
It seems like they made it already because last weekend was filled. I mean, I saw lines I never saw lines before. Go-carts and some of that. It, you tell me, I mean, it, it felt like the place was packed.
Yep, no doubt.
Hey Kenny, that wasn't bad for three dollars. You said you'd give me three dollars to say that.
All right. All right. We'll now, uh, move on to our public agenda, citizen comments. We'll have a total allotted time of forty-five minutes. Each person who speaks will be allotted three minutes. And when you come forward, if you will, please sign in at the table and state your name. We'll start on the left side of the room, your right side. If anyone on the left side of the room, my left, your right, would like to speak, please come forward. Okay.
Custom made.
That's a good one.
Thank you.
The last time I was here.
Before you start, if you would, just for the record, if you'll state your name.
Uh, Paul Boudreaux. I live at six five four Savannah Estates Boulevard, right off Brazier Road. Uh, the last time I was here, it was to address something of a litter problem. It was where the, the garbage trucks were leaking their minutia all over the streets. Addressed the city council and we got that fixed. And I hope we're successful today with this problem as we were then. Um, I thought I was gonna be speaking from back here. I'm here to address a very bad litter problem that we have, that I noticed to and from work, day in and day out, two or three times a day. Uh, basically Brazier Road, Wells Drive, Camp Wilkes Highland and, um, Pass Road. Um, somebody addressed a mattress that I wrote an email about. That mattress was on the side of Pass Road for three months before I just, you know, that was it. I, I was at my wits end seeing that every day, two or three times a day. Um, as soon as I sent the email, it was removed. I don't know who did it. Don't really care. There's copious amounts of, of trash clearly on city property that's not being cleaned up. I mean, people that own property, their property lines don't start at the street. It starts most of the time ten feet or, or further back. So the city is not making sure that that gets cleaned up. Now, if it's the property owner's responsibility that is behind that, I don't know, you'd call it an easement, is city property, uh, is responsible for cleaning it up, then that needs to be pursued. That needs to be enforced. Um, you know, if I don't know the, the patch of grass between my property line and the street, I got news for you. Tim Sapola is gonna be issuing me a ticket. So I don't know why litter should be any different or addressed any differently than not cutting grass. Picture one is Highland Drive. Um, picture number one, that garbage is still there. And I emailed that, about that on February the third. Picture number two, most of that is gone. Picture number three, got, that, that trash got picked up sometime in the last twenty-four hours. I don't know who did that or if it was the, the people that own the, the, the trailer, that, that was on the trailer, if they, uh, picked it up because of citation or not. I don't know. And again, I don't care. What's that? Will somebody, um, give me their three minutes? When did y'all start the three, whenever I started handing stuff out? Do you want to hear about a problem or not?
If we yield to you, we have to yield to everyone else. Um, let's, what's, is there anyone else in the room that is gonna speak for public comments? Anyone else in the room? Everyone else okay with giving him three more minutes?
I'm fine with another three minutes.
I think given the, given the topic and we've all, uh, or seemed concerned, I, I don't think a couple more minutes would, would hurt.
Okay. And I, I agree. I mean, this has come up before and I, I think it's, just illustrates the point further that this continues to be.
Mr. Boudreaux, if you, if you don't mind, speak as fast as fo-fo. And, and you'll, speak as fast as fo-fo. I don't think you're.
I, I think.
Don't talk as fast as.
Hold on, hold on one second. Let Mr., we'll have Mr. Guns.
Pictures.
Hold on, Mr., hold on one second.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Guns.
We're setting a precedent. So I think because we're setting, uh, to keep from setting a precedent, let's, uh, vote on giving him three more minutes so that we can, we can give it to him properly versus.
Okay, yell.
Because there are other people will see this and then they would violate the rules. So we need to stay in order. So.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, you talk to Peter, see what you can do there.
Peter, are we allowed to do that?
You mess with him. Can we cut everybody off before?
Majority rules.
Because we do cut everybody off.
I mean, to keep things very consistent, it would be, uh, it'd be fine to, uh, address this, uh, addressing a lot of it after the meeting. I think the message is, uh, the message is pretty much clear what the situation is. And, uh, I mean, I'll be happy to meet with him right now too, while y'all are going on just to, to get to the root of the problem.
Okay, we're gonna, okay, Mr. Boudreaux, we're gonna follow, follow the advice of our attorney. Um, we're, we're gonna have to cut you off now, but, um, I'll be willing or, and anyone else, um, that's willing, we'll talk to you after the meeting.
All right.
Okay.
I could have probably finished up in the time it took y'all to pontificate me.
All right, I, I appreciate it. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? And, um, on the left side of the room? Anyone on the right side of the room? Anyone in the back? All right. If not, citizens' comments are now closed. We'll move to the policy agenda.
Ordinance to amend the LDO related to standards on fences. P. this, Mr. Demming and seconded by Mr. Guns.
All right, this is second reading. All right, do we have discussion?
I, I, I think I've discussed this already. Um, Mr. Creel maybe just wants to give a brief, some, brief synopsis about the simple changes to the language. I think that would be appropriate.
Well, as we mentioned before, when this, uh, came up the first time, you know, we get, uh, people in the office all the time that file applications to put in new fences or to replace their existing fence. And when we inform them that they have to turn the finish side to the outside, which is what the ordinance requires now, they're, they can't believe it. They, you know, they're, they're bearing the burden of paying for the fence and they believe that they should have a choice as to which way the finish side should face. Uh, now, the ordinance right now says that if you've got a, uh, one, a, a fence with one finish side and one side that's framing material, that the finish side has to be turned to the outside. We're not changing the language where the fence would face a street right-of-way. Uh, if it's facing a street right-of-way, the finish side would still have to face out. However, what's being proposed is that the owner, uh, who owns the, the house that's putting up the fence should have the choice, or we believe should have the choice as to whether or not they turn the fence to the inside or to the outside, since they're the ones that's actually paying for the fence. In a, in a perfect world, everyone would put up good neighbor fences that look the same on both sides. But, you know, that's not what is happening right now. And, and just as a quick example, an illustration, if I live in this interior lot in a subdivision and I've got property owners next to me on both sides and one in the rear, and each of those surrounding property owners decide to put up a fence, me on my property, without any financial investment at all, I'm the one that winds up with a fence with a smooth side facing me in that, in that entire backyard. So this is just something where we've had a lot of complaints about it over the years. And we're just trying to, uh, trying to recommend some changes that would allow the owner that's paying for the fence to make the decision.
Thank you, Mr. Creel. I don't have any more.
All right. Any other discussion?
I have a couple of questions, comments. How long is this ordinance, that existing ordinance? About how long has it been in effect?
Went into effect in twenty-ten.
Twenty-ten, so it's been there eleven years, a little bit over a decade. The good neighbor fence, I mean, that is a term. It's not just something we, that, a feel-good, uh, word. It's actually an actual fence, good, good neighbor fence. It has the planks on the other side. How significant is the expense to have a finish side and then a good neighbor side on the other side of the fence?
Wait, let's just say that they were gonna do what's called a shadow box fence, which is considered a good neighbor fence. Then basically what you're doing is just staggering those same one-by-six dog-eared, uh, facings, one across from each other all the way down. So in theory, there would be very little cost difference between the two. You're still having to pay for the framing to go in. You're just basically putting those on the other side. It would require a framing member on the other side, a cross piece on the other side in order for that to be nailed to. But there again, the, the cost difference would be minimal or should be minimal.
Should, would be minimal. So is, it, do you know of any other communities that have an ordinance that requires a good neighbor fence on one side? Is that, I mean, is that too radical? Or is that, that's something that would be normal in a municipality to consider?
Let, let me ask. I mean, a lot of that could be defined in any new subdivisions or something that would spell that out. I mean, I'm not just asking the questions. I think that's for the.
You mean like covenants, Mayor?
Yes, sir, yes. In the, you know, the subdivision where you got, you know, bumper to bumper kind of.
There, there are some subdivisions that put it in there. Uh, you and I talked today, you know, about one thing that, that could be considered that might be a little bit radical is to just prohibit one-sided fences. I mean, now that would be up to the council, you know, to, to consider that. But, uh, um, most of the people that we've, we've talked to, especially since this came up the last time, and we've had to go out and address a lot of the fences that got completely knocked down, uh, and the people are, are completely replacing them, have actually, uh, turned the finish side to the outside. If you've driven up and down, uh, uh, some of the places on Pass Road and Pops Ferry Road, you'll see that, uh, they're actually turning the fences to the outside. So.
I, I just want to make this general comment. I know this was, I don't know if you could call it controversial. It was three-three when we voted on this previously. Uh, director said that it's a minimal cost to, to do the good neighbor fence. It probably strengthens the fence and it, it, it may, may protect that fence from future damage. Um, maybe we consider just, uh, making our ordinance requiring that fence to, to have the finish side on one side and then the, the staggered planks on the other, uh, to beautify our city. I mean, perhaps we ought to consider that. And that's all the comments I have. I'm not debating it. I'm just throwing it out there.
Okay. Before you respond, there's a couple other people want to comment. Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, thank you. As, as I understand it, Mr. Creel, right now, let's, let's take, uh, Edgewater Estates. If, if my back fence in my backyard, which fronts Pass Road, it should have the finish side of the fence facing Pass Road.
That's correct.
Because, I mean, that's currently what the ordinance says. And, um, what, what this text change would do really deals more likely with interior lots, typically in a subdivision. So, uh, we're, we're gonna put a fence right here between my house and Ms. Newman's house. And I'm gonna put my fence up between Mr. Wilson's house and my house. And then a back fence here. Currently, the finish side has to face.
The neighbors.
The neighbors. So I'm paying for a fence and I gotta look at that ugly side. Okay. Um, so then the only thing that we're, we're talking about right now is the finish side, which way it faces with fences that are constructed, but excluding those fences that face a thoroughfare, a road or a street.
That's correct.
And that's true in a lot of subdivisions.
Yes, sure it is.
And this has really become an issue because of the zeta and the wind and everything. And just a personal note, I've got a shadow box, a part of my fence, and it's gone through all the hurricanes. Not a problem. I'm amazed. I think that's the way to go. Uh, but then the other three sides, a couple of which have blown down and since been repaired, um, I take the full brunt of the wind. I, I'm reluctant to require that, that folks put that good neighbor or shadow box fence, um, you know, as a requirement in the future. I just think if, if Mr. Demming's paying for a fence that we're talking about and neither side of the fence faces a thoroughfare, then he's paying for it. He ought to be able to put it up as he likes. If he wants to look at the finish side, fine. If he wants a good neighbor fence, fine. If he wants to look at the ugly side, he's paying for it. Anyway, that, that's my feeling on the matter. Thank you.
All right.
I'm gonna follow up on, uh, just one thing, Jerry. On the fence side, on roads, is it all roads or just major therapists? How you write that in there? We have to do that on certain roads and not, or other roads? How you write that in there?
Actually, actually, we didn't have to make a change to, to that part of it because the, the way the ordinance is written now is it, a one-sided fence, every side has to turn out. So it already encompasses the sides that would face a street. But what we did is when we, uh, put the, uh, option in there for the property owner to make the decision about the interior part of the fence, we went ahead and, and addressed the, the sides that face the street or a right-of-way so that the finish side would still have to be turned out. Uh, and, and you can do that. I mean, that's, uh, we're, there's nothing unethical or illegal about that. We can, we can write the ordinance to, to state that. But let me, let me just give you one other scenario. Let's just say that in that same situation we talked about before, where I own this property in the middle and the neighbor on this side decides to put up a fence on this side and he turns the finish side toward me. But then I decide to go out back and finish enclosing my yard. I would have to turn the rough side facing me on the rear and on this side. But on this side, I've got a finish side facing me. So there's no consistency in my backyard as to the fence. So I'm essentially being penalized for enclosing, enclosing my yard. The other thing that we talked about too is that when you turn the fence to the outside, you're, you're essentially, if I'm putting up a fence, uh, around the back of my property, I'm essentially having to trespass over to, onto my neighbor's property in order to nail the facing side on the other side. And, you know, in, in most neighborhoods, you know, the neighbors probably get along. But there are some places where that could be real contentious for somebody to come over onto their, their property and, and have to put up that finish side.
That was my question. If I say I'm sitting on Pass Road and I gotta put the pretty side facing Pass Road and the rest of my fence is gonna be the ugly side.
Either way.
You know what you're saying? When you said about three different ways, you're gonna have two different looks on the same fence.
Well, it's, it, it's your choice. It's your choice on the rear. Now, let me just tell you. Most people, if you look around, if you look around at the neighborhoods, most people, without us having a tele- neighborhoods, most people, without us having to tell them, go ahead and put the finish side. If they face a street, if they face a street, they will go ahead and put the, the finish side out there. We've got some old fences in town that were put up before this ordinance went into effect, where there's still some framing that shows. But most people, if you look at the front of their house, or the front and the side of their house where it faces a street, they already put the finish side toward the outside, because I think they believe that it makes their house look more attractive, and it does.
I, I, I still think we ought to consider, I mean, a fence is a fence, right? And, and when somebody goes to get a fence contractor, they're gonna look at the ordinance and see what are the specs on what kind of fence you can put up? How high it's gonna be, what, you know, whatever? And I, I'd like to propose an amendment to just add that when you put up a fence, one side has to be a good neighbor side, the other side is the finish side, and problem solved. The, the city's more beautiful, the fence is stronger, so the assets are better protected, uh, whether the, the property are blowing into the city streets or whatever, I, I don't think it's a bad idea, you know, to do that. And it's a win-win situation. We've already heard from the director that it's a nominal cost. It's a nominal cost. We're not putting an undue burden on someone putting up a fence, and I think it solves both sides of the fence, pardon the pun, of, of people that are disgruntled. Any way we go on this, you're gonna have people disgruntled, you know? Or we can go with this a certain way, and they're gonna say, yeah, I had to put a couple extra planks on my fence, but at the end of the day, we're, we're a more beautiful city, we're a stronger city, and it may solve this, this issue, and it may be the right compromise. So, I, I'd like to propose that amendment, uh, Mr. Chairman, when the, when the, uh, when we finish the dialogue here.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, my, my only response to that would be, uh, when, when folks think of a wooden fence, they typically think of a privacy fence, and this, this type of fence does offer less privacy, and that would concern some people. So, my only comment there. Thank you.
My comment is, number one, I think it's crazy that you gotta get a permit to put a fence up. Number two, if my neighbor doesn't like the outside of the fence, they can go by planks for $1.29 apiece and put them on the other side. That's just my, my take.
Would, would we allow that? If you put your fence up, you allow, would the ordinance allow for the adjacent owner to put up those planks on the other side?
Absolutely.
I mean, it's not his fence, so...
It's actually on a property line, and it's on your property, and, um, it, it's, that, that side of the fence is on, if you put a fence up along a property line where the, the spikes are put into the ground, that side of the fence is...
Legally, legally, can that be done if it's the fence that I bought and put up?
My guess is, excuse me, I'm sorry. My guess is Mr. Creo probably has some stories to share about that. I don't know if we wanna take the time, but I'm sure he might have a comment that might enlighten us all.
We do, and, and I mean, you're gonna have some neighbors out there who, the, the person that's paying for the framing to go in, there are some places where, uh, the person that put that fence up would have no objection to somebody coming in and doing their privacy thing on the other side, and then you would have some where they would be absolutely opposed to allowing anybody to put that on there. And a lot of places, some people will actually move their fence a foot inside the property line to keep that from happening, to keep that other owner from being able to get to their fence to put something up there. They'll actually move it in a foot.
So, who takes care of that little strip of foot of property?
Well, if the adjacent property owners...
Legally...
They'll box it in.
And then take care of the property for what, seven years?
Yeah.
And then it's their property.
That's right. Adverse possession, that's correct. That's the way it works.
I, I just think we got an opportunity to solve things that'll be solved for years to come for that $1.29 plank that we're talking about, and it, it doesn't add that much expense to, to the fence, you know? And, uh, I'm just, when I've thought through this, because I've heard people on both sides of the fence, and, and, you know, before I came here today when this came back up, and it just seems like rather than say, okay, we're gonna let this side do this, and that side's not gonna be happy, or whatever, um, I, I just think it would be, you know, at the end of the day, you gotta put up a fence, you gotta have a good neighbor side, you gotta have a finish side. And that is the, the specs, that is our new ordinance, and we're better for it, and at the end of the day, despite a $1.29 plank or two.
Am I correct in thinking that a good neighbor side looks the same on both sides?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
Yes. That's what it is, yes.
Okay. So, it's basically, you have a runner at the top that holds it in, and there's nothing in the middle, and then you have a, a one at the bottom that holds it in, and it, okay.
So, the only issue still is one person is gonna incur all the cost, while everyone, someone else is gonna benefit. So, who's gonna be the one to incur all the cost?
But you're also opening up a can of worms.
It's gonna open a can of worms, yeah.
Because now, you're dick, one partner, there's always gonna be a problem, because someone's gonna say, well, I don't want him to put up a good neighbor fence if he uses those brown color boards. I want, if he's gonna put a fence up, he's gonna have to use a different color board. There, there will always be an issue, and we'll always be going round and round, trying to, trying to prevent anyone from having any complaints, and we just can't do it. Um, Nathan, I would call for the question unless, and I think he has a motion that we wanted to entertain.
I'd just like to, if everything is finished on the regular debate, that, to propose an amendment that we require a good neighbor side of any fences that are erected going forward. Um, and again, for let the record show that the director said the, the cost is minimal. Uh, let the record show that the councilman said that his own fence is stronger and has withstood, uh, damage from high winds, and, uh, I think we're, we're trying to accomplish the beautification of, of our city, and, uh, I'd like to propose that amendment.
He's proposing the amendment, the motion. I'll discuss it once we pass it.
Do you have a second?
If it moves.
You're discussing, to me, just added an extra cost for no reason, to people who put up the fence. Only person who makes any money is a contractor, period.
Yep.
So, you know, what you wanna do is the other side's up to you. But I mean, you can't force somebody to put boards on the other side. They say it's a $1.29 a plank. That guy got a five or six hundred front and...
We don't, we gotta have a second to discuss that. Do we...
We have never stopped discussing the same thing. What do you mean? You have to have no sex in? Where are you coming from?
All, all we're discussing, I proposed amendment to add a good neighbor fence on the other side. If it doesn't have a second, I just want the record show that I've tried. I mean, if we require metal fences, plastic, or wood, it's what we require.
Is there a second? Okay, no second. If there's no more discussion, I'll call for the question. All in favor of the ordinance? All opposed?
Just saying, were you going back to the original?
This is the original, we're voting on the original ordinance. There was no second.
There's no second for the amendment.
But you went back to the original motion?
Correct.
Okay. Make sure that's what you stated.
Okay, we're voting on the original, but motion as written, yeah, the original ordinance as written. All in favor?
I'll vote for that. We'll change that.
All opposed? Six to one. Mr. Glavin opposed. We'll move to the next ordinance.
Ordinance to amend the LDO pertaining to short-term rentals. Previously moved by Mr. Barrett and segmented by Ms. Newman.
I don't have any discussion. All right, is there any other discussion?
What are we actually doing here?
Okay, the, uh, the charge was for us to conduct a public hearing to consider allowing short-term rental in agricultural zoning, agricultural restricted, and limited business zonings, where short-term rental is not allowed right now. We conducted the public hearing at the Planning Commission. The, the Planning Commission, uh, agreed with the staff recommendation not to allow it in the AR zone, because that would have a, a very negative effect on our flood rating, uh, on the number of points that we're getting for our flood rating, and most of that property is marshland anyway. But in the agricultural zone and the limited business zone, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval for, uh, it to be allowed as a conditional use, which means that every case that comes in in those zonings would have to go before the Planning Commission and the City Council, so that it could be considered on a case-by-case basis.
A question, now, this is opposite in your ward. That's all these forty acres and that.
Correct, yeah.
And you have nobody against this.
No, no, we didn't, I, we, there was no one that spoke.
No, I'm talking about you. You live out there.
No, no, I have people calling me...
They don't have nothing. They voted their, I'm talking about from you, the people you deal with.
No, I've had multiple people calling me. That's why I asked for it, is they're asking for this, um, in these...
I supported this. I just wouldn't let you know. I worry about the Planning Commission. You live out there.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, just a, just a thought, and I know that they would be permitted as a conditional use, and not permitted by right. Is that correct, Mr. Creo?
That's correct, yes, sir.
I'm just thinking, I remember hearing something somewhere this week, I can't recall where, in, in some subdivisions, probably in what's, what used to be North Biloxi, now the Sunkist area, there may be some agriculturally zoned properties there. I think, I'm thinking out around Sunkist or off Pops Ferry Road out around, there can't be many, but I'm just thinking lingering lots, if you will, or, or zones from years and years ago. But even then, if, if somebody wanted to do something with them in terms of a short-term rental, it's still gonna be a conditional use under those circumstances.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay. That, that's all. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Seven zero. We'll now move to the consent agenda.
Good.
Second.
We have a first by Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Glavin. All in favor? Seven zero. But, I'm sorry. No discussion allowed. I'm ready to go home. All right. All right, do we have discussion? We'll start with Mr. Tisdale.
I have nothing, thank you.
All right, Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming? I'm just kidding, Mr. Lawrence?
Come on back. Just real quick, on B, these bonds, these 2012s and 2014s, any 2011, any of these coming off pretty soon?
E? You say E?
B, like it bad.
Fair, like it be.
I said, are there any, somebody's older bonds, are they retiring them pretty quick?
You're asking when the 2011 and 2012 bonds are gonna retire? I'll, I can't tell you that without going back and looking at the feedback. I'll, I'll be happy to look it up tonight.
But I was just wondering, you know?
Dano? Dano win the 2011, 2012? Not either. Yeah, there's a chart in the exhibit. I don't have the exhibit in.
Yeah, run it, but I was just saying, I'm so, well, you kept listing them, so I figured they wasn't retired.
Date of issue. The 2011 bond was issued in, uh, October of 2011, so, and the 2012 was March, April of 2012. Discharge that as a one.
No, that, no, that, I don't think that was...
Are you going to bring that up tomorrow?
I said, I just, I just figured that'd be less money we'd have to pay. Yep.
My guess is...
And, uh, another one on, uh...
Not next year.
Twenty-five, I think, is when they, is I recall.
On G, let's see where we paying for paving Greater Southern, you know, with the help of Beverly Martin. I said, it's pretty nice that we only put up 23,000. She puts up 23,000, so that's good for the city and the people at Greater Southern. That's, that's a good paving job. So, that was a good thing. It's always nice when you get to work with one of the supervisors that helped a city like that. Just helped it, done it pretty quick. And the last one is J on the lagoon. What was the problem with the lagoon before that they couldn't use it? You're giving these rights for these people to use this lagoon, or the area around it. So, what was the problem before?
This is J, sorry.
That they couldn't use it, couldn't build on it? What is it?
Yeah, when, when you had a lagoon there, there was a restriction that they couldn't build a house within a certain area around the lagoon, and that lagoon was taken out of operation, uh, several years ago. I, I believe that house was, may have already been there, but they, they didn't really, uh, the restriction wasn't picked up. So, I think he's selling the house, and during a title search, they said, uh, we need to remove that restriction. The restriction said that there should be no residential there. That's, that was more of a DEQ issue. Our personal zoning with the city, it was zone residential, so it was not an issue with us. So, it's just a title search, kind of a clearing up his title.
For that, that piece of property.
There's clearly no lagoon there now, so...
All right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Demming?
Nothing.
Mr. Glavin?
Yeah, um, I, I want a little conversation on I, uh, the benches for CTA. I, I just have a, a question on a couple of things. The, the advertising sharing, or, or whatever we call it, it's $4.55 per inch per month? Is that the agreement? Or is it, if there's advertising, there has to be an advertising, uh, paid on that, uh, particular location?
What it is, is just basically to equalize, it, it's not intended to change any of the subsidy with CTA, it's just to recognize that, uh, it's sort of an in lieu payment. It's, it's comparable to what we're charging with Lechner. He's paying 4.55 a month. So, it's just to equalize that, that we're change, charging both the same, but it's just part of the overall subsidy of, um, of CTA, but it's not really designed to credit against what they're already receiving.
So, it's not additional? It's not, it, it is, or it isn't additional?
It is additional, too, yes.
Okay. Okay, so it's an additional. And then the repairs, uh, if I understood the agreement when I read through it, if it's 50% damaged, or, I mean, what's the criteria on who pays for repairs?
Yeah, it, it's, they have to replace it if it's not usable, or, or in the determination of, uh, community development, that it's, uh, some of them are, are actually kind of lowriders, they're, they're a few just a, a foot or two off the surface of the ground, so, uh, it's sort of, it's a determination that some just need to be replaced or repaired.
So, there currently, if I read through the schedule, there's 72 benches or structures, uh, you know, throughout the, the agreement. How many more are going to be proposed, or do we know that number? Mr. Coggin, is...
No more.
We don't know yet? We could add or subtract from it depending on...
All of those, that's the...
Right. All right, but currently, we know there's 72 in place, and that's what this agreement is covering currently, and then it could change a little bit throughout the dynamics of, of, of the process. All right, thank you. Much success. Let's get it, let's get 'em riding.
All right, Mr. Guines?
I have none.
All right, and I don't have anything? All in favor? Seven zero, any exceptions? No exceptions. We'll now move to code enforcements.
The only item on the agenda today is, uh, one that was given a 30-day extension, Ho Mandone, 391 Main Street, and this property is still in violation.
All right, is there anyone here to speak on behalf or against of Ho Mandone on 391 Main Street? All right, if not, this case is... Go ahead. Mr. Creo, was anything done at all?
No. And, uh, and I actually had, just so that there wouldn't be any confusion about a misunderstanding, I had Tim Sapola go out and meet with him last week to remind him about this meeting today, and to make sure he understood that, uh, that everything had to be cleaned up, and, and nothing's happened.
Any other discussion? All right, if not, this case is closed.
Can I ask a question? Jerry, real quick, since we had this, uh, beat-up meeting last week, what, what'd you do with 367 Forests?
I actually have pictures of 367. Uh, the, last week, the council had asked us to go conduct a structural integrity inspection of that... us to go conduct a structural integrity inspection of that structure at three sixty-seven Forest Avenue. And so the following day, we met with Ms. Lou and with, uh, one of her representatives at the side along with my inspectors to do a walkthrough. The, um... Should be listed as three sixty-seven Forest.
That's Bowman's property there.
That's it on the right. Okay. This is the, this is the structure at three sixty-seven. Ms. Lou was correct. She said that last year that we had given her a certificate of occupancy because she had made the repairs to the structure. Now, what's happened to it, if you'll stop here, Keith, for just a minute, what happened here is that during the hurricane, a tree fell and just basically scraped the, the overhang off of the front of the house. That's what you're looking at now. And of course, it damaged the, the service mass for the electrical on there. So we went out and conducted a walkthrough. And from a structural standpoint, I can't come to you today and recommend that the building be torn down. Structurally, other than being ugly on the front from what happened to it, it's structurally sound. Uh, yes, there were some places in there where we saw some minor termite damage. And, uh, there were some things that needed to be corrected in it, but, um, the, and of course, the, this house started off as a very small house on there and was just added on to many times. And in a lot of places, the addition didn't make sense. I mean, it just kind of awkward-looking, uh, structure from the front to the back. But, uh, she's had a contact, contractor contact me, uh, about trying to get the power back on to the house, and I, I refused to turn the power back on. I told her that I would give her a temporary pole, uh, to set out beside the structure if she pulled a permit to repair everything that was, that needed to be repaired. And so I'm waiting to hear back from that contractor now.
What kind of time you gonna give it to do that? I mean, it's been five, six years now, with all this garbage on his property.
We already have it written up. It's already in the system, going through court. Uh, and, uh, it'll be whatever time it takes to get to the judge. So she's, the next court date appearance is gonna be the second week in March, and, uh, and we'll address it then.
Well, how about when you have these properties like this written up so many times? What, what, can you graft it that way?
Well, what we're doing, what we're doing now, uh, is that we're bringing the, the repeat offenders that have real problems with, we're bringing them to the city council to get a resolution to, to, uh, tear them down or to make sure that, uh, there's some agreement to repair them the right way.
You know, that's fine when you say you're gonna repair them. But I mean, if you play around for a year to get this, that's not helping those people living around there.
Yeah.
They don't goddamn do it fast. Well, my contract will be in next week, on the next week, on the next week. I don't get it. So that's just something we need to stay on top of. Yeah, it's like you said, we need to take care of the neighbors. Let's do nothing right. Not somebody that's doing anything wrong.
Well, there's some good things happening right now. And, uh, and let me just tell you, uh, since we have reestablished community court as a separate entity from the municipal court, uh, community court is becoming very effective again. Also, we have four code enforcement officers now, so the areas that they patrol are, are smaller than they were before when we had three. And, uh, the new people that we have are, are, are very effective. They're going street by street. And, you know, we're not nitpicking. We're looking for obvious problems, obvious code violations, and when we see them, they're getting written up.
I'm thinking you can't have one piece of property destroy twelve, fifteen other pieces of property.
I agree.
That's, that's the problem. Thank you.
All right, we'll now move to the routine agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All right, who, all right. First by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion?
All right, uh, Mike, both of, what we got? Anything coming? How'd we do this week?
We have a small amount of money due in. Six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in the pipeline.
Thank you.
All right. And, um, do I have a motion, Mr. Tisdale, for recess?
Yeah, we prob, we probably wanna vote on the routine agenda and then we'll get to that.
That's all right. I've been trying to get out of here since we started the consensus. Okay.
You know I'm a...
You got any more code enforcement? We got any code enforcement issues?
Any more code enforcement?
No, I'm just teasing. Go ahead.
All right. I have a motion, um, by Mr. Tisdale, second. I gotta have a second for routine, uh, Mr. Guine's second. All in favor of routine? Seven zero. And Mr., Mr. Tisdale wants to make a, a motion on...
Yes, I, I would request that we recess in memory of Colonel Phyllis Lutman. I believe she was, um, um, retired, U.S. Air Force, and she was very active in the Biloxi Bay Chamber and other organizations locally. If, if you knew her, uh, then she was a, a bit crusty on the outside, but she was a sweetheart and, and very proud to live in Biloxi and always, always pushed Biloxi. So, thank you.
All right, we have a second.
That was a nice...
A second by everyone. All in favor? Seven zero.
All right, now you can, uh, go.